I'd call the meeting order, please rise with a pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is applying out of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Public comment.
Seeing any additions to the agenda, we have a appointment with at one fifteen with David Atterbury. Also, we want to have two POs, one for the county attorney in a small amount and one for joint communications that are not listed, so. Reading and approving of the minutes, do they want to have a chance to read the minutes from last?
I read them, all abstain.
I haven't actually read them, to be true. Want to postpone until next week? I don't want to make a motion if I haven't read them, so. Okay, but see, I did that once before.
Commissioner comments and committee reports, Jack?
I have nothing.
I just wanted to let everyone know that our emergency management director is installing AEDs today in the courthouse. So for the public, anyone that's in our courthouse doing business, there will be two AEDs, one located outside of the treasurer's office and then one on the second floor outside of the courtroom in the waiting area. And they have really easy instructions. If you ever have to use them, you should be able to do that.
We just got word from the road and bridge that the independent bridge is open for now. It will need some extensive repairs, but it has been looked at and it's safe to travel. But keep it in mind that in the future, there was going to have to be some repairs and we'll probably have to do some temporary closures as that work takes place, so it's open for now. New business. Twenty twenty-three fuel bed opening, should you do that?
First one's from Consumer Oil.
Okay. Purchase price of clear diesel, three thirty-six thousand, three hundred and twenty-five gallons at three dollars and forty-eight cents per gallon. The winter blend seventy thirty surcharge is thirty-six cents per gallon. Purchase of twenty-four thousand, five hundred gallons of dyed diesel is three twenty-two point five or three dollars and twenty-two cents five per gallon, winter blend was thirty-six cents per gallon. Purchase price of twenty-one thousand, three hundred and twenty-five gallons of unleaded is two dollars fifty-one cents per gallon. So I stumbled over that. Did everybody get that route now?
That's thirty-six cents over the regular purchase.
It's a surcharge, so.
FNF Petroleum?
Where they are. Well, that's what I'm trying to. I might have to get my notebook and let's who I'm sent to. Bates City, Missouri. Where they're from. Okay. The clear diesel, thirty-six thousand, three hundred and twenty-five gallons is four dollars and forty-seven nine per gallon. With the addition for the surcharge, it would be four dollars and fifty-two cents per gallon. It says includes Kansas State tax only. All right, purchase price for twenty-four thousand, five hundred gallons of dyed diesel is four dollars and forty cents per gallon or forty four zero six and for the surcharge on the seventy thirty is four point four five six per gallon. And then the purchase price for the unleaded, the twenty-one thousand, three hundred and twenty-five is two point eight oh four per gallon. And I can go back and look at, we sent it to four or five different places. We didn't send it just to the two.
You said the Kansas tax.
Yeah.
Is that something that we have to pay?
Yes.
Was it included in the consumer oil price?
It does, it is.
That was part of the requirement, right?
They're not even close, no.
Hey, Joe.
Yes.
I just wanted to add that this was also on the website and we posted the bid notice in the paper.
But we also sent it to how many other places? I don't have my notebook, but me, it's back here behind me. Probably Jackson Farmers and then.
Yeah, I sent it to several.
Yeah.
You sent it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just wanted to know that we sent it to several places. So.
Do you want to review this before we approve it or?
Well, the only thing would be to make sure that that sales tax is in there. And it's part of the bid. And it should be part of it, so I would think that.
Yeah, it was sent to Consumer Oil and Propane, Jackson Farmers, Ethne and Berwick Oil and Donovan Ag Partners and Hiawatha and BP Propane and Naughty Pine Oil and.
Yeah, so if that's part of the bid process, if that says it is, I think we would go with consumer would be.
And let me ask the yeah, the fuel question, would we be going out to spite it market price?
I don't know.
Well, I know.
I mean, honestly, you know, I can't answer that.
Because we don't know where gas prices, oil prices seem to be going down.
Right.
For now, for now, I understand.
So I know, I can't, I don't know what would be the smartest thing on that, if you want to know the truth, Jack. You know, when we, when we bid this or when we talked, when we were getting quotes for for the budget, they could just go and look what they thought it would be, and that's how we figured our quotes. I don't know what it's going to do. Honestly, I don't, I mean.
The purpose is to lock in our price.
Right, is to lock it in. You know, last year we got lucky, we locked it in and we had fuel a lot cheaper than this, at least a dollar. What's that?
They buy the futures market.
Right, I mean, it's up to you guys what you want us to check into that or.
I know, I just heard, and I don't know if I have this information right, because I think I heard it. The social event, the level where the county doesn't use the bid process, things might not right. I don't know if that's true or not, Joe.
But then I, I was listening to the news the other night and I thought I heard something about OPEC was only going to produce so many barrels of oil.
Produce oil in this country.
I mean, well, that's true.
Even if it may not be the best price, I think it also gives you kind of a figuring or it's a guarantee that it couldn't go crazy because there's so much volatility. There's everything from OPEC in there, the war and the Russian, the capping of their other countries are wanting to cap their price for crude. So many things were in, there's only a twenty-three day availability of diesel. I mean, it's very volatile. And things could, I mean, this has been trending down, but it could go up, so.
Well, I know, as I drove in here today and I saw the pumps, I was like, should we wait it another week before we we bid it, but you know, you can't outguess everything. You know.
Mr. Chairman, can I weigh in a little bit?
Sure.
Part of that's the EMS, since we've done this both ways at EMS, when we started, we bought at market value to the WEC system. Since we've done this, we have come out ahead every single year. I do believe maybe across ten years, we'll have two that we pay for it. But I think across eight, we come out better, so. Having done both ways.
Taking a risk, but I don't, there's any way for us to sure.
I don't think the risk is zero, no matter what we know, but I do think across time bidding fuel does benefit the taxpayer.
I do too.
We just play the doubles out, I have no.
That's, you know, like I said, when I came in here today, I saw what was in the pump and I'm like, well, should we have waited? What's it going to do? And then I listened to the news and everything you hear.
Well, it was yesterday, it was five fifty-nine.
So.
Your recommendation.
I would recommend that you go with Consumer Oil.
And to pass it today.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see any reason not to.
It's been moved in second after you accept the bid, all in favor say aye. Pass is three to zero.
All right, thank you very much.
Why don't we just go right into Mr. Atterbury?
Couple of handouts here for you. I don't know, people just take one of each and. And what I'm here to, today to talk a little bit about, and I know you guys have talked about this before at your meetings, but looking at revising some of the terms of your existing sales tax revenue bond issue to extend the length of it and to free up some, some cash and make it available to pay for some improvements to some of the the ball fields. So what I want to talk a little bit about is that the schedule that we're on here. Talk a little bit about the numbers and then talk a little bit about the trustee services also. We had a couple of discussions, oh, a month or so ago with, with Patrick as well as with Gilmore and Bell about the easiest, most cost-effective way to proceed with, with getting these changes made to the documents. And I think what we ended up concluding was that working with the current owner of the bonds, which is Capital One, to issue a new series of refinancing bonds that contain in it the, the provisions that you're looking for would be the easiest and most cost-effective way to get this done. As compared to going out for a whole new bond issue where you could have a lot of additional costs related to disclosure and finding a purchaser. Just sort of this directly approaching the current owner of the bond seemed to us to make the most sense. So the schedule that we would be looking at here is today, you have in front of you a resolution that we typically call a sale resolution. It's basically a short document that authorizes staff and Gilmore and Bell as your bond attorneys and us as your financial advisor to go out and begin working with Capital One to, to put the new bond documents together. So there'll be a process where documents are circulated and comments will be provided on them. The goal here would just be to make sure that those new documents reflect exactly what, what you guys are looking for in terms of the terms and conditions. Once all of that is wrapped up, our thought would be that we would come back to you at your meeting about a month from now on January tenth with those final bond documents in hand. And at that meeting, you would adopt a bond resolution that would officially lock in those, the new bond issue. After that, it takes a couple of weeks where the bond documents get reviewed and approved by the Kansas Attorney General. And then what we've got scheduled here right now is that the new issue would close on the twenty-sixth of January. And so on that date, essentially what Capital One would do is they would give you money for the new bond issue and immediately use that money to pay off the old bond. So at that point, the old bond issue would be gone and you would just be kind of living under the, the, the terms and conditions of, of the new bonds that hopefully then would meet what you're trying, not hopefully, they would meet what your goals are in the financing, so. As regards to the numbers here, I, I like running numbers, so I, I've got some schedules here that I'll just kind of go through with you quickly. If you've got any questions, I'd be happy to dive into them in more detail, but on page one of the report, what you see is the existing payments that you have remaining on, on the outstanding bonds. They've got a rate of about two point six percent, they have a rate of two point six percent on them. And the monthly payment is about thirty-five thousand, five hundred dollars. On the next, and the final payment on those is due on April one of twenty-six. On the next page, what you'll see is what the estimated payments would be on the new bonds. And the two big differences on the new bonds is that they would now go out until December one of twenty-seven. I believe that was Ted, wasn't that the date we were looking for?
Yes, sir.
Okay. If it's not, we still, these are just preliminary, so we could change them, but and then the estimated interest rate, you'll see there, this is entirely based on market conditions, is about four point eight percent. The annual payment, because you're stretching the, or the, the monthly payment, because you're stretching it out a little bit longer, actually goes down. On the next page, you can see here that your monthly payment is actually about ten thousand dollars less than before as a result of the refinancing, but it does stretch out, that's about another, you know, what? Eighteen months or so, I've had that up, but. And then on the last page, you just sort of see a sizing calculation for the new bonds. It's going to have to, the principal amount's going to be about you know, a little over one point three million dollars or so. Any questions about the numbers, the details? The, the only other thing I did want to touch on real quickly is you know, there is a trustee involved in the outstanding bond issue. They're the ones who you send the payments to and they turn around and then send the payments to Capital One. They also hold a couple of different accounts. A, you know, a reserve account that has, I think, about five hundred thousand dollars on it and that's in a surplus account. I had a brief discussion with the trustee, which is Exchange National Bank and bond trustee services over the last couple of decades have undergone a lot of changes and there's a lot more regulatory requirements to serving as a bond trustee that quite frankly, weren't in place when the bond issue was originally done. So in talking to Exchange National Bank, you know, they, they were saying, if, if you were comfortable with this and if, if you were comfortable looking for another trustee besides them to provide this service, they would be perfectly fine with that. In fact, they might welcome that because it's not a service that a lot of banks provide anymore. There are a couple of banks that I do know. One is Security Bank in Kansas City, Kansas, and then another one is U M B Bank that regularly do provide trustee services now. So Exchange was very willing to proceed to continue to be the trustee if you wanted to, but if you are looking to change and if you're, oh, well, you do have the opportunity right now to change trustee and if you would you know, feel comfortable moving it elsewhere, I think they would be very open to that too.
I feel comfortable leaving it there. That's just me. They, we, we give them a lot of bank. We, they do a lot of banking service once. This is a three-year term.
Yeah, being that this such a short term, I think if they were suggesting and this was a twenty or thirty-year thing, I would probably look elsewhere, but to finish it out, that we've been in the boat with them for this long, I would like to continue it and then finish at the same time.
Okay, okay.
That was my.
I agree.
Those fees that we pay them, I don't know if it's spelled out here, but as I recall, it's like eighteen hundred dollars a year.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, yeah, something along those lines.
It's not an unreasonably low number.
That's. If you were to go out and look for another trustee, it would, I, I'm guessing it wouldn't surprise me if it was closer to twenty-five hundred dollars a month or so. That might be a little bit lower than the market rate is.
Well, I, I think that eighteen hundred is what I'm remembering. I think that was annual.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I mean, yeah.
Oh, I thought you said month.
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry, I meant annual, yeah, no, annual, yeah.
Well.
So are those payments figured in?
No, no, these numbers don't have the trustee fee. This is just showing the principal and interest on the bonds, yeah.
Sorry, yes, I'm going to ask some questions, but I was just, since I haven't seen this before, I'm just trying to wrap my brain around all of the information. So right now, we're looking at the sunset to be April of twenty twenty-six and we're locked in at a two point six.
That's, yeah, well, that's when the last bond payment is, yeah.
So extending it would then increase our rate to four point eight, which would have a hundred and four thousand, eight fourteen sixty-three more in interest that we would pay. And the savings then dwindles from a savings amount of ten thousand ending in three, one of twenty-six to an expense of one oh six?
Yeah, over the life of the issue, there would be an additional.
This doesn't, this is. I don't know that it's worth extending by looking at the numbers.
I think what we're trying to accomplish.
Because if it ends.
We're trying to accomplish, that's a different story.
Well, but I just, that's what I want to understand is because from the numbers, what we're doing is.
Right, right, no, that's, that's exactly right. Interest rates have changed.
For that short period of time.
But then the sales tax will end in April twenty-six. And the, what I understood, the
Absolutely.
The goal was, was to free up the additional funds to complete projects or you do necessary repairs and.
No, absolutely, yeah. So the, the goal was after our town hall was to stick with that original expiration or sunset date of December of twenty-seven. And it's easy though to say all these things, but when you start looking at the numbers, then it's like, does it make sense, right? So it sounds great to extend it and to accomplish these projects, but if it's costing more as a financial advisor, what would your recommendation to us be?
No, that, that's a very good, good question. I, you know, I, I I, I think a lot of it has to do with the extra funds that you're looking for to, to assist with these projects. When do you need them? Right now, there is the, that maintenance reserve that's part of that project that is, I believe it's five hundred thousand dollars in there. And that money could be used for project costs right now if you wanted it. So that's how much you could free up immediately.
Okay.
The, so if you did nothing, you could have access to that much money. And if you wanted to have access to, to more than that. And I think there was another, was it three hundred and fifty thousand or so in, in the surplus fund?
Three hundred and seventy-one thousand.
Okay.
Right.
So if you wanted to have immediately available to you, the five hundred plus that three seventy-one, you would, you would do the refinancing. That would also, the refinancing would also start to free up essentially ten thousand dollars more a month that you could have available to pay project costs.
Okay.
So, so. That, that's essentially kind of what comes down. How much money do you want to free up immediately? And if you, if you want, you know, the better part of eight hundred and fifty or nine hundred thousand dollars immediately, then the refinancing would accomplish that. If you could, if you only need five hundred thousand dollars, then.
Maintenance reserve.
Right, then.
Do that immediately.
Immediately, yeah. That's what I'm saying. Is that, Patrick, you're understanding that the maintenance reserve could be freed up if need be? I'd have to, I'd have to check, but I.
I think, yes, that's what it's for. Yes, there's no problem with you, but using that five hundred thousand. Well, let's just, theoretically, we use the five hundred thousand.
Yeah.
Could we, how much could we build up then by the end of that term? We currently own that. I mean, can we, 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 let's say we just want to split the five hundred thousand section. How much can we, how much can we build this up to for the end of the the current bond? It would be two hundred thousand. I'd like to see a fund available when the bonds are paid off and still have available for either projects or.
The, the, the way that, I, I think what analysis I probably need to do here is the the project, the maintenance reserve has five hundred thousand dollars in it. The surplus fund has three hundred and seventy-five thousand, so three hundred and seventy-one thousand. The surplus fund is supposed to be used to begin to pay off bonds early. So what should be occurring right now is that surplus should be used to pay off bonds early. If we assume that they, they use that for, you don't refinance and they use that three hundred and seventy to pay off some bonds early, the question would then be, okay, how much sales tax are you collecting and going forward, how quickly will that surplus pay off the old bonds? It could very well, the, the bond issue, the way it stands now, if the surplus fund is used to pay off bonds early, the bonds won't go out to, to April of twenty twenty-six. They'll be redeemed earlier than that. So that would probably be that what I'd want to do is a projection of, okay, when would that actually occur? When would those bonds get paid off? And that would then tell you, okay, once those bonds get paid off from that point forward, well. At that point, I guess at that point, the bonds would be paid off and the money would be gone. I mean, the sales tax would be gone, yeah, yeah.
I was just hoping there was somebody left to be.
There probably will be just because sales tax, even once you cut the sales tax off, there's a few residual months of collections that come in. So there will be some that, that comes in extra, but it, it'll probably be, you know, like two or three months worth of collections.
Right now, I don't know what kind of projects there are, but let's just say there's a million dollars worth of projects. And what Commissioner Quinn's saying, you're just going to spend a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars to, to a million dollars worth of projects. Right now, we have available to us half a million plus three seventy-one. And we have other ways of funding that either, and I don't know if we got a million dollars. But.
Oh, more than that.
Really, well.
Well, it depends on what projects want, you know, look at the new shutty, yeah.
No wishful, so.
But, yeah.
I seem like to me, you'd be better off. Well, I'd like to continue in an office on it before we make a decision to bear. I, I just want to do the right thing for the facility. The facility never was a hundred percent. And, and a lot of people in the community worked hard to make a lot of things happen, but right now, we don't have a, adequate locations of restrooms. We don't have sun protection, we don't have a lot of things that we'd like to have done there. Plus, I think the, the paths are they've, they've served their life. They probably need to be re, either refixed or replaced. So that's it, we've got at least a million dollars to deal with, but I don't think we're talking about three million dollars. But, and I, I don't know if I'm just talking to both sides of my mouth here because it seems like we if we have us eight hundred thousand to spend, I gotta believe we could make eight hundred thousand.
Well, if you.
Thirty-one only if we refinance.
Right, that the, the only, that three seventy-one is, is supposed to be getting used to pay bonds off early, so you really, if you don't. Yeah, and, and then probably there'll be some, again, once the bond issue's paid off, there'll be a few months of residual collections from the sales tax that could.
Hear the request.
Yeah.
But I agree with Jack on further analysis before we take action today. I mean, we do have five hundred thousand dollars that we can dedicate to them to get started on their project planning. And then just weigh the pros and the cons of what we're going to pay with an additional increase of interest rate, more interest versus the savings we're trying to accomplish.
Yeah.
And I appreciate this information that you provided today because it helps with that, but I just don't feel like in a half hour, I can dive in and make a decision that could have, you know, without further consulting with the with the sports complex folks and.
Yeah, but the change in the interest rate and stuff that, you know, when you're, when you're theorizing and you're, you're not plugging all these things in. You're you're not plugging all these things in until you see the final cost. It's.
No.
Like you ordered a new vehicle and, yeah, I'd like this and I'd like that, and then when you see the final total, it's.
Well, and that's why, uh, that's why I wanted to to show you this because it it it, there's a number down here that you have to be aware of that. That absolutely, nothing's free.
Yes, sir, and that's one of the things, like when we're in meetings and, you know, you want to extend the life of something and this is the reasoning behind it, all sounds good. We want to support that decision, but when you start looking at the numbers that you provide, it's like, hmm, I don't know that this is. Without further notice, what we want to do.
If I would say that the. US three seventy-seven was about right on a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. That means the Atchison facility in the same proportion.
We get three hundred.
They get a four hundred fifty thousand. Yeah, would be five, six hundred thousand, because I I realize you want an estimate term, but I don't think so.
Yeah.
You know.
No, I know, that's what I.
And I didn't, they didn't even mention bleachers for the soccer fields. So I think there has to be more analysis before we move forward and.
But this gives us what we need in our wheelhouse to make decisions and free up.
Yeah, we need it.
Yeah.
And I actually use a word, arche, but it used to be kind of a word we. But that that's available to us also, and that really would help the community.
Well, if you like, what I can do is um, spend some time. Developing what appear to me to be the two different scenarios. Scenario one being stick with what you've got. Look at that, look, look to see how much money you get the five hundred thousand dollars freed up immediately and then look to see when. The sales tax would get canceled. Um, and then compare that to then refinancing, what that would mean to, how much money you get immediately. And then what you could expect to be able to receive over additional overtime.
I think that's where to go, yeah.
Yeah, I like that scenario. Now, on something like that, now you've got the um, interest rate of was four point eight, you know?
Yeah.
And that is your best knowledge of what it would be if we pulled the trigger today.
Yeah, yeah, they, um.
It's possible that if we waited six weeks, it could be higher, higher.
Yeah, what 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 they said, um, Capital One and and nothing, they they haven't. Agreed to anything or any, they they've just agreed to look at this again, and and I think they're willing to to work with you, but. They 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 said the interest rate is about a percentage point above what the rate for the the five-year treasury bond is. So if you do want to kind of follow what was happening to the interest rates, just look at the five-year uh, rate for US Treasury securities.
Well, G P Boardman, famous man, said, financial markets did the luxury.
Yeah.
And he's been right all these years.
Yeah, yeah, knowing that obviously will impact the the numbers one way or the other.
If um. They decided it would. Do this refunding in the end of twenty twenty-four, for example. Um, that would still be an option that would be available because prior to the. Last projected payment.
Yeah.
And, but they could still essentially do the same thing with the only difference being that.
You mean if we would extend it even further?
No, but instead of doing this extension now, you could see what the interest rates were two years from now. If you were.
Oh, okay, I see what you're saying. Yeah, I think, yeah, there's um, nothing magical about doing it right now, um, other, other than. If you did want to free up more than five hundred thousand dollars right now, then. Then that would be a reason you'd want to do it right now, but if you've got some flexibility to wait on that, then you could wait on doing the refinancing.
Okay. Good now.
Thank you, sir, this is.
As Capital One indicated, because I I I'm not sure if I completely followed up on this part because of. As I recall, they were agreeable to amendment of the present documents to allow or. Funds to be used for projects.
Yeah.
So, um, there would still be some bond council costs involved in making those changes, I'm sure.
If you, oh, you mean if they just wanted to change that and not like change the length of the issue?
Well, right.
Yeah. Yeah, I think if you were, um, if you were looking at. Just changing some of those, wh- where where things become difficult, one. One question got brought up is, well, why don't we just have Capital One. Change some of the terms of the existing bond documents, why are we refinancing one issue with the new issue? Um, and there was a couple of reasons that um. Gilmore and Bell suggested that we do the complete refinancing as opposed to just modifying the existing documents. And one of the reasons is because, first of all, last time this issue was refinanced with Capital One. Um, it it, this is the way Capital One wanted to do it. They wanted to pay off the old bond issue and create an entirely new issue. The other reason though is, um, once you start talking about taking a bond issue and extending the length of it. Um, whenever you do a bond issue, you have to file a bunch of reports with the IRS. There's a form, a tax form called eighty thirty-eight G that you have to. Submit to the IRS and it's got a lot of details and terms on bond issue, but. One of the things that it lists on there is what the final maturity date is. If you ever go in and and change that final maturity date, from what I understand, it's a very arduous process to go in. To the IRS and have them change an existing document that they got ten or twelve years ago. Uh, from what I understand, it it's a lot easier to just go in and do a whole new bond issue and file a new form than it is to try to amend an existing. So so those are the two reasons that Gilmore and Bell suggested we just refinance the old bond issue with the new bond issue now. If we're not talking about changing the final maturity date, uh, if all we're talking about doing is maybe. Oh, having Capital One change that one covenant in your document to. To free up that, the money that's in that redemption fund, that extra three hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars. We might be able to do that without doing a refinancing. We might just be able to modify the covenants. Um, so that's something we, I can follow up with them also about, because that that might be a sort of middle ground solution here to get you more money.
Yeah.
Um, uh, now the sales tax then, you know, would be gone when the the new issue paid, when this current bond issue pays off. Um, but you know, if if you get the money out of that you're looking for before that time, then maybe that is a good solution here. Thank you, but thank you, Patrick, it's. Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, very informative.
Thank for driving up there.
Oh, yeah, no problem.
It's still a little car. Yeah, I don't much going.
What's going on with, was it Bean Lake up there? Is, I mean, it looks really dry.
Well, you know, that has gradually sulked over the years, so you could go out in that lake two years ago, it'd be this deep in the middle.
Oh, and that was all, okay.
So it's now just. I'm sure they could get a bond for ten million dollars, they could dredge it up.
It probably wouldn't go where it's for, unfortunately. No, I I just, I've I've been driving by there for years and years and it just kind of shocked me this time.
It'll fall back up and it won't have much water.
And they'll still be.
Yeah, you know, so.
Well, I'll follow up if you'd like, I'll be honest. Thank you, thanks.
Next up was Eddie Thompson, the county appraiser with the um. Real estate, real property disaster relief application. They have an application from due to a fire that the individual lost their home, yeah. On November third and was filed for uh, property disaster relief. And this would be, we'd have to do a resolution path, correct?
Uh, it's just an order.
Or order number, is there a number for that?
I think it would be three. And and the only other ones I'm aware of that I recall are the two previous ones for this.
We've done two earlier this year for fires that happened uh, in January and March, I think respectively. And this order would be an order of the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Atchison, Kansas pursuant to K S A seventy-nine dash one six one three. Regarding the application for the abatement or credit of property taxes on their homestead damaged by earthquake, fire, flood, storm or tornado. I hear a motion to.
Um, and I would second just based on the need proration of the date of occurrence. Is what we.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we had uh, talked about that, so it's been moved and seconded. Any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes through to zero. Yes. We have a P O for County Attorney, uh, this is County. County General Capitol Outlet, uh, again with their remodeling, uh. It's a hundred and thirty-three dollars and fifty cents for uh, cat five ethernet cable. Wait a second, sorry, it's been moved in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes through to zero. And then we have a P O for Joint Communications. Uh, this is for. A e-dispatchers, the first responders and notification system. Uh, this is in the twenty twenty-two budget. In the amount of three thousand six hundred and forty-eight dollars.
I moved approved.
One second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes through to zero. Older unfinished business. County Councilor updates.
I I don't have any.
I have a, I have a question, did the publication for the sales tax starting April first, has it been public?
There's not a publication requirement. It needs to be sent to the Department of Revenue. And I haven't talked to Michelle about, I talked to Michelle last week about it needed to be done. I don't know whether it has been done.
I think we should, I think we should follow up on that. I'm sorry, I thought it was.
Okay.
And just real quick on business following up, because I forgot to mention this morning, um, I touched base with Amy Finch on. The sale, the tax sale properties that they were gonna cover yesterday in their meeting. And um, it wasn't included in yesterday's land bank agenda. So discussions are ongoing and she expects to consider that matter on December nineteenth land bank agenda, so just an update.
All right, any need for an executive session?
Yes, yeah. Hey. Um, I moved that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session at one forty-five P M to discuss personal matters of non-elected personnel as allowed by. K S A seventy-five dash forty-three nineteen B one and that the purpose. Of the closed session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee and the board come out of the executive session in thirty minutes. In the commission room basement of the courthouse. Those present will be the three county commissioners and EMS director, Corey Scott.
Spin the second of all in favor, say aye. Passes through to zero. Debbie, we passed your, the.
I didn't see her out there, I'm sorry.
Well, I didn't appear because you told me you didn't need me in here.
Yeah.
No.
Well, I saw you out there.
I'm sorry.
When we get to that, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good afternoon.
Have you too.
If I don't, you again, I hope I do.
Well, I'll treat you well.
But.
I hope it's on the back of your room.
No, don't do that, don't. Well, I see and you just, you hopefully you don't need us.
No. Okay, we have another executive session.
Yep, I moved that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session at two sixteen P M to discuss personal matters of non-elected personnel as allowed by. K S A seventy-five dash forty-three nineteen B one and that the purposes of the closed session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee. That the board come out of the executive session in thirty minutes in the commission room basement of the courthouse. Those present will be the three. County Commissioners and County Appraiser Deborah Thompson.
Your second.
Sir.
It's been moved in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pass three to zero, we're going back into executive session. Back out of executive session. Are we in need of another?
Yes, sir.
I did under that. All circle it.
Okay, do you want us to wait for? Okay.
Well, go go ahead, I'll. I'll speak up.
Okay, I moved that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session at two forty-seven P M to discuss personal matters of non-elected personnel as allowed by. K S A seventy-five dash forty-three nineteen B one and that the purposes of the closed session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee. And that the board come out of executive session in thirty minutes in the commission, commission room basement of the courthouse. Those present will be the three county commissioners and our solid waste director, Stacy Mark.
Sir, it's been moved, moved in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Bring back into the second session.
Well, I got a letter back from the um, battery.
Oh, yeah.
He said, we want a picture of the Sullivan.
He's going to bring it down.
I'll stop up and get it.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Okay, it's back, executive session. Um, any public comment?
Right here, a motion to adjourn, I moved to adjourn.
Three seventeen.
Three seventeen.
I'll second.
It's been moved to second to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Well, I mean, we're three oh three last week.
The what?
The German two, one oh three last week.
Oh, nice.